So why isn't our video showing up? Andrew?
Yeah.
Why isn't my video showing up?
Uh, do you have it enabled in the bottom left there?
I don't have anything in the bottom left right now.
Maybe go to the top to the big box and make the full screen.
Yeah, make make it full screen and then you should see start video on the bottom left.
It's not going big.
Just have that one there.
Uh, yeah, that muted you.
Working like it was earlier. No, we were already muted, actually.
There's Italian and there's rent.
Hmm, I'll go with Italian. Andrew?
Yeah.
Will not pop up screen like it had.
Okay, give me a second.
The ship where Sosco on has never blocked the Caribbean to get over to Europe. So it's not looking like we're gonna get on that one either. I think there's a way.
Andrew, can you hear us?
December sixth from Puerto Rico instead of bringing it over there to New York. And so I think we're good.
Thank you, Mark. Andrew's right here. Okay, we're good to go.
Um, okay, I got six o'clock. Andrew, everyone can, I guess, Mark, can you hear us? Yep, okay.
Okay.
Mark on the big screen.
Just to make sure that he's standing.
Okay.
Um, okay, well, I've got six o'clock and we'll go ahead and call um our Garden City Community College Board of Trustees. A special meeting to order where you have a special meeting um to discuss one particular item. And then following that, we're going to go right into a second meeting, which is our annual board budget retreat. Um, we'll go ahead and do roll call for all the trustees here. Uh, this is Blake Wassinger, present.
Shanna Smith, present.
Marilyn Douglas, present.
Beth Tedrow, present.
David Rock, present.
Leonard Hitz, present.
Okay, um, everyone's present and um just to reiterate to the public, um, all the information on on the special board meeting can be found on the website under Board of Trustees uh for tonight's special meeting, as well as I'll reiterate for the next meeting. But uh we'll go ahead and move into the consent agenda. Um, the agenda item would be the network switch, refresh, um, purchase and financing. Um, I would, I'll just go ahead and um open it up if there's any discussion on that. Um, any questions who we'd like to ask Dr. Ruda or the administration um about that?
Um, Ryan, if you would, I would just guess that this was an opportunity to take advantage of the CARES funding for something that we needed. Does that sound right?
Correct. Yeah, we've, you know, we've had this in plans there for for a while there, as far as being able to address this particular uh need, um, you know, and this was indicated. And we also have Derek and Andrew here to answer questions if there's technical questions. But essentially what this is, is really just going to be able to give us capacity with the switches that are going to be out there within a three-year timeframe there. Just being able to take opportunities, uh, financing that we have in place there right now, as well as utilizing CARES Act stimulus funds to address an area that's wanting to be needed and then trying to be proactive instead of waiting for a three-year period when things are at end of life. Trying to be proactive in addressing this at this point.
Okay, so can you explain the financing option? Because it says a FEMAS and a five-year financing.
Right, so there's, there's two different options that uh that we want to have just included both within the divided information here. So there are still some additional CARES Act funds that are becoming available now to Garden City Community College. So what we've done is gone ahead and sought financing options where if we're not able to pay for the network switch refresh in full, that we have the ability to have the financing set in place and structure for that in place. Our intent is, is that at the worst case scenario, we would utilize CARES Act funding to cover the first year of the payment and take that out of the CARES Act funds. Our best case scenario is that we can be able to utilize some additional CARES stimulus funding that's coming, uh, that's going to be coming available uh to try to take care of the payments all at once.
Okay.
So we put those scenarios in there just so that if we, if we need to be able to utilize just the first year through CARES Act, we can build it into our budget. Going forward, we have that capability. Um, but the best case scenario is just to be able to pay for it altogether.
For Andrew to tell us how this will affect the students.
Yeah, Derek and Andrew there, if you, I don't know if you heard the question there, but just kind of talking through what the benefits of this refresh are and specifically what the benefits for students would be. Uh, just kind of have you guys walk us through just a high-level overview of that, please.
Uh, yeah, it's just to, uh, you know, basically bring us up to where we should be. Um, you know, there's new technology every year. Um, every, every new phone is faster than the last, so we have to keep up with that, you know? Students bring their uh their phone to campus and use our wireless. Um, we need that backbone to uh be able to keep up with them. Uh, so this, this, this refresh will, uh, you know, just give us a, a lot more capability.
And not only that, but sixty-six percent of our switches on our network will be end of service, which me, which means they'll be no longer receiving updates as of 2022. And then the rest is, the rest of the switches we, out of service, uh, 2024. So we wanted to move pretty quickly on this project. And last year, when Andrew went out for bids, uh, it was around four hundred thousand. And you can see in the increase in pricing, it's at five hundred thousand this year. So we wanted to move on it pretty quickly so we can try to take advantage of some cost savings by not waiting another year.
But I think the other side, this is your talk, you go to David, that what we've seen over the course of the last several years, the students are coming in with multiple devices. So not only are they bringing laptop and phone, but also their Wii and their Xbox and everything else that ties into our network. So, you know, what this does is it increases our, our capabilities for speed, but also for security standards as well to be able to have that in the highest capacity possible there for.
How long will it be for? I mean, the, how long will these switches last?
Uh, I mean, Andrew, Derek, correct me if I'm wrong there, but I mean, these are essentially kind of a process there that about every eight to ten years have to be switched out. Is that accurate?
Yeah, we hope we can get ten years. Um, the, the average is ten years. It's been about ten years since our last refresh. I think it was 2009. Um, so, so these, these switches, uh, live their life pretty well. Um, we, we can probably get pretty close to that again.
And it would be about a ten-month project there to be able to, with our staff, go through and update the switches and have a full refresh. Is that accurate as well?
Yeah, it's probably going to take around that time. We're, we're gonna have our, uh, Art Network admin, Lance, um, do the job. We're not, we're not, uh, outsourcing that part of it. So, uh, he'll probably be working a lot of Saturdays, just to make sure there's no downtime for buildings, uh, no downtime for students, things like that. Um, it's just a lo, a lot of planning. Um, should hopefully be wrapping up by next summer.
Well, to me, it sounds like it's a, um, it's necessary. So I would make motion to approve item A of the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second. This is David. I'll second.
Okay, Marilyn, um, motion, made a motion and, and David second. Um, any, any other further discussion before we take a vote? No. Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign? Okay, and then we'll do a roll call. This is Blake. Um, aye.
Shanna, aye.
Marilyn, aye. Beth, aye.
David, aye. Leonard, aye.
Okay, very good. Um, and again, just if anybody's joining late, um, that, this is a special meeting. We're gonna adjourn this. But if you, uh, would like to look at the information, um, it's located on the Board of Trustees under, under this special meeting. Um, you can take a look at that, but we'll go ahead and adjourn that and move right into our uh annual board budget retreat. Um, and for sake of people following along, um, Dr. Ruda and, um, his staff, administration, um, Carla, that will be referencing the, uh, the budget retreat booklet. So if anybody has any questions, they can kind of keep along with that. It's a little easier than trying to get a video and, and making sure that is. So, um, with that, really, this, uh, this time is, is all for Ryan and his staff to, uh, present what, uh, what next budget is going to anticipate to look like. Um, so we'll move over to, um, to Ryan.
Okay. Well, kind of be tag teaming this year, but, uh, wanted to just kind of start, you know, this will be more of a, an overview of budget there like, like Dr. Wassinger had mentioned. But throughout the, the last several months, there's been a considerable amount of reading and, and really just studying as far as how it is that we can anticipate and plan and build budgets there with so many unknowns. But one of the things that I wanted to kind of start, you know, just with a little bit of reference on there, this comes from an article that was in a recent Chronicle Higher Ed. And just to kind of give you an overview there within, within this article, you know, really talks about the fact that in the midst of, of this particular budget planning season, the expectation is, is that you try to determine and navigate a lot of these unknowns. But much of what it is that we are planning for is, um, you know, unrealistic, uh, projections, particularly in, in the realms of many of the things that we're going to talk through there on the various legs of funding that we have at, at community colleges. But this article talks about how to be planned for next year with no reliable predictors of how many students will show up, whether that be on campus or online. And colleges facing levels of financial unpredictability that has not been seen since the Great Depression. Uh, you know, within this article there, it says that many college leaders are trying to focus on the future while already reeling from heavy financial tolls that have been experienced with this pandemic. Uh, possibility of what is considered to be a normal fall will hinge on the virus being controlled in a way that seems impossible to forecast right now. I heard a, uh, a metaphor this week there that I thought was pretty, uh, pretty telling of the conversation that we're gonna have tonight. And this metaphor talked about the fact that budget planning in these times is like trying to plug the hole in the Titanic with bubble gum. It's near impossible. And, you know, that's a lot of, that's a lot of the work that this administration has been faced with and in every college, quite frankly. So even if the virus does appear to be contained enough for a regular move in here in August, um, you know, there was much predictability and anticipation that there would be new outbreaks. To be similar, repeat what we faced in March. Trying to predict the course of the virus, planning for much of that there, uh, the model, the mindset that we were taking in the Garden City Community College, trying to be proactive and trying to forecast as best as we can. And we're making decisions and communicating these decisions for return to face-to-face uh here in the fall semester at Garden City Community College. So much of what we're going to be talking about and just kind of walking you through there is exactly that, our best, our best projections, our best forecast. Um, but a great deal of the information that's going to be included and that is included in this budget retreat document really is just a, a reference point for you. We will not be touching on each of the documents that are included within this. Uh, but this is a, a reference point for you that really goes into everything as far as enrollment. Many of the different things that we use for predicting enrollment there, particularly in our service area. Uh, so we, we use quite a bit of analytics to take a look at the high school graduating classes that we have, how that carries over into enrollment. Really taking a look at trends. So there's a considerable amount of information on enrollment, uh, within this, as well as debt schedules. Just so you have an idea of where we're at there as far as current debt, what our payoffs and timeframes for payoffs are on that end. But we want to be comprehensive as far as being able to provide you with information, but also being able to really focus on the specifics and the nuts and bolts of what we want to pop out there tonight. As far as the revenue and the expenses and what it is, we believe are the best projections that we have available with the information at hand. But as we get into that there, like I said, we will be tag teaming, um, this there, but I want to give credit where credit's due as far as Carla and the word cheap of them to uh, being able to get this information collected to a point that we're going to talk about tonight on the revenues and projections, uh, and the expenses projections there as well. So, you know, with that said there, obviously, if there are questions you have on any of the items that are included in this package, I do not advise. But there's going to be some very specific, uh, information in here that we are going to focus on more than, more than others. What I would, uh, ask for today is just turn to page twelve, thirteen. And with our page twelve. You know, so as I referenced here from the article, trying to be able to navigate some uncharted waters. The unknowns that we face are many and vast, uh, but the community colleges, this is the reference point, are really built on a three-tier funding model. First tier that we have is your tuition and fee structure. Second tier is the state funding, and then your third tier is your local tax, your local act of law. So I want to, I want to just to kind of be able to spend some time going through and talking about each of those three tiers of funding that we have and getting a little bit more specific about each of those areas reflected into next year's budget. So we will start off there just in taking a look here. Page twelve, uh, is a representation of what revenue and expenses look like, having not experienced some of the other uncontrollable expenses that we talked about last month there as far as with insurance. So we wanted to give you a reference point there just, uh, as far as where revenue and expenses. So we wanted to give you a reference point there just uh as far as where revenue and expenses would be without the uncontrollables, and then we'll get into some of those other conversations with the uncontrollables there as well. Really, just taking a look at, if you, if you focus and take a look at the revenue. The first item that we will talk about there is going to be the tuition and fee structure as far as what we have set for revenue and really that first leg of the funding model that we have at, at Garden City Community College. So for this next year, administratively, what we have projected is that we will be experiencing a fifteen percent reduction in credit hours generated. So we're building this next year's budget to be reflected on fifteen percent reduction. You know, I'll keep in mind that last year, at the same time when we had these conversations, we projected and set this fiscal year, this is getting ready to end, on a five percent uh reduction in credit hours. Because of a lot of the hard work there with, with faculty and staff, uh we have not, we have exceeded and we have not had a five percent loss in credit hours. But we'd much rather be proactive in anticipating and projecting this uh with, with respect to the budget. Than being able to have a flat line there as far as where we're going to be at credit hours and then experiencing a fifteen percent cut. So as you can see there, the fifteen percent reduction in credit hours uh in the, in the column there that's highlighted in red, uh will be a five hundred and eighty-four thousand dollar reduction within the budget from where this current year stands uh in respect to tuition fees. As we move down to taxes, uh your local taxes, which is reflective of the second leg of our, our funding model. You know, we've had, we've had conversations here uh as far as some of the things that we knew we were going to be facing with oil and gas valuation. Particularly Fannie County being so prevalent on oil and gas. You know, we did have the expectation and the belief there that we would be seeing that be reflected within this year's within this year's tax valuation. But I think one of the things that's uh, you know, very impressive about Fannie County and really is, is kind of the model there for Fannie County is the hard work that goes into new developments, property valuation, uh and everything else. Because of the property valuation in Fannie County, much of what we were anticipating to be about a three hundred and forty, three hundred and fifty thousand dollar loss in revenue because of oil and gas has been offset by the increases of new construction and new developments in Fannie County. So on your, on your spreadsheet there, when you take a look at local taxes, actually based upon uh the valuation of this is that we received here this year, you're actually only be realizing a twenty-six thousand dollar loss where our current level of it is set at there right now. So again, just a lot of that is, you know, attributed to the work that we've done here in Fannie County for growth. Being able to offset a lot of the oil and gas uh losses that we were expecting to realize. And then the last, the last leg that we, that we talked about there as far as revenue is the base state aid. And the base state aid, you know, most of the conversations that we've had at state level, you know, and really as you followed any of the conversations with where revenues are at at the state level, uh there's going to be some some tough conversations and tough decisions uh on what the state budget will be. What we are anticipating, um what we have kind of been planning for within higher ed is that there will be a ten percent allotment um at some point during this next year, uh ten point, ten percent decision state aid. Uh so on the state aid funding, we are estimating uh that ten percent, which would be a three hundred and seventeen thousand dollar loss of revenue from where our state aid is, is at.
So our, this year is still intact?
This year is still intact.
So we're talking about next year, that's our second reduction. Gotcha.
Are some chances of them coming back in this year? Asking for it back?
I think pretty, pretty minimal. I think pretty minimal. I think we'll get through this fiscal year with that for doing any, any decision. We just need to speed through this next week. Yeah, I, I really think a lot of what we've been experiencing would be a lot of what I want on. So with that, and then, you know, the next line item is really just miscellaneous as far as you know, just interest earned on various accounts there altogether, total revenue wise with what we're looking at on the three tiers of funding. We are projecting a nine hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollar loss of revenue based upon where we're at currently in this fiscal year. I don't know if there's any additional holds or extension that we have on there. Okay. So with that, then just kind of moving into, you know, talking about how it is we're going to try to offset those revenue losses there on the expense side. We'll kind of go through and just talk about some of the things that uh we have already put into place and some of the things that we are building into this next year's budget as far as reductions in expenses. On the salary line item, uh as of March, we had placed a freeze on hiring. Uh so there are currently eleven positions that we have that have not been filled, but it just became open through retirement resignation and other means there through attrition. So with those positions being open there then, this next year, what our what our stance is there is that we will not be filling those eleven positions. Uh so we will just realize those those gains uh from the positions as far as salaries and benefits and not be replacing those positions. But you know, I think the, the point to be made on that there is that when, you know, when we're talking about that, just kind of putting some things into context. You know, that's a five percent reduction in our employee base. So we have about two hundred and seven full-time employees. So by cutting those eleven positions there, I mean, we're realizing about a five percent cut to our employee base. Keeping in mind that it's not current employees, it's not employees that are going to be out of work there because of these decisions. But it is employees there that, you know, it's going to be a, it's going to be a quantity issue. Uh will not affect quality, but it'll be a quantity issue that we're facing here as far as employee, employee workforce.
In any of those positions, faculty positions, and if yes, who's taking up his slack?
Uh three of those positions are faculty positions. So it'll be really kind of a compilation of several things there. There'll be additional adjunct, adjuncts that we hire on there for those. Three faculty positions are in our social sciences, health and, and physical education, and then physics. And so those will be, you know, either full-time faculty taking on overload and teaching overload or we realize through adjuncts.
What's the total number again of full-time employees?
Two oh s- two oh seven.
Oh, how many full, how many full-time do we have?
What's the, yeah.
Yeah, two hundred and seven.
Okay. That's what I thought I heard, what I was thinking. I might have missed it.
So if we have to hire more adjuncts, how does that create a cost savings then?
Well, basically in your benefits.
Right. So that's not very much, though, is it?
Well, it's, no, not really. Um I think our adjunct pay is six hundred a credit hour. Um so yeah.
What's the overload? Uh I mean, what's the pay on the overload?
Uh five fifty.
I, I think the, like you said, it's, it's tough that you say it's not gonna, I mean, I know we talked about this and, and it is a tough topic to talk about, but you know, when you, when you remove those positions and, and you're having overflow, and I know Dr. Ruda and I talked about this, you know, there's at a point where you can only ask your employees to do so much and spread thin and, and that's a hard. I mean, hopefully, we can get back to filling those positions soon, especially the faculty. But the other point is, is the fact that you know, if we do get kids that want to take a class, you know, the, when there's not a teacher or a faculty member, you know, we can't offer that class in abundance because we don't have that. So I, that, that's, I mean, obviously, we, we struggle with that, but hopefully, we can bounce back and, and those positions, you know, in, in the near future can certainly be looked at or but I just look at it as like I said, that, that more so that that's just less time that we can offer students a class. That's the hard thing. Because again, you can only ask your faculty to spread so thin or take on so much more overload or even find adequate adjuncts for those positions.
Yeah, or um, you know, for a thirty credit hour load per year, which is what a normal load would be kind of equates to eighteen thousand dollars in adjunct pay. So compared to um forty-eight thousand or, you know, plus seventy-two hundred dollars per employee that we budget for benefits. You know, it is significant.
It is.
The thing that, the thing that we're challenged with is, you know, we want to make sure that we maintain the rigor of the, and the quality of instruction. Um so that's, you know, our plan is that it's a temporary situation. It doesn't, we just kind of like when we put some projects on hold that you had approved us to go forward with because there are a need for deferred maintenance, et cetera. You know, as the unknowns become more unknown, you know, trying to be as conservative as we can because we just don't know, not much is little.
It's better to do this than lay him off.
Right, exactly.
It is. Yeah, but I, you know, I think the, the other side of it there too, and again, it's, it's it's better than laying him off there. But you know, if you take a look at the strategic plan, we're always evaluating strategic plan and the, you know, the priorities that we have written into it there. One of the things that you know, I feel a lot of pride for here at colleges is that we have held a very strong focus on STEM education in the last seven years. And there are very few community colleges across the nation, let alone a community college in its rural serving and the size we are that has two full-time chemistry instructors and a full-time physics instructor. So what that does is it does bring in, you know, students and the majors uh that are pre-educ-, you know, pre-med, pre-kine practice, pre-vet, uh that typically will be transferred into the four-year schools and taking a lot of your first year chemistry and, and physics classes that we can begin to start offering here. One of the priorities that we have in our strategic plan, our long-term strategic plan is to be able to expand our offerings that we have against them, you know, and so by not having the physics instructing, instructor position, you know, it's hard to find full-time physics instructor, let alone a part-time and adjunct physics instructor. And that's not something you sure want to be teaching online either. So you know, for this, for this year and for the foreseeable future, you know, that's probably going to be a, an offering that we're just not able to offer. But I think the other side of it there, the two, what, you know, what kind of compounds things when you're talking about faculty is you know, truly trying to get a high level of student engagement in the classroom, on campus, in the advising arena or anything. The highest level of engagement that you're going to find is going to be with a full-time faculty member. You know, that's not taking anything away from an adjunct. It's not taking anything away from those that are teaching for us as an adjunct. But truly, the highest level of engagement that you're going to find is with that full-time faculty member who's going to the band conferences, going to the student activities, who's going across campuses, is visible with the students. So you know, those are, those are unrealized losses that you're going to be sitting into with, with the loss of these positions.
I understand where it is stalemate with any kind of new programs and things like that. I don't like the idea of not being able to continue to grow and adding new programs, whether it's tech programs or what. But if something like that is considered, and it's going to have to stand on its own, would that not be correct?
It's going to have to stand on its own. We're going to have to be creative, similar to what we've done with carpentry, where you can find some, some funding partners there to help.
Well, some rich guy comes along and funds it.
Oh, yeah, I think, you know, whether it's through grants, whether it's through, you know, the the recent, you know, the resourcefulness there that we've had as far as being able to fund some things in cooperation with, with our USD partners. Those are going to be the things that we have to think about there as we go forward.
So pretty well pulled our horns out on looking at anything, any new programs, anything new?
Not at all.
I hope not.
No, I mean, we still have uh actually within the budget planning that we've done, we've still kept a full-time industrial maintenance position within this budget in the hopes of we can be able to find that unicorn out there that wants to come and be in industrial maintenance position, they're an instructor on campus. But we still have, we still have plans that we're working on there to be able to, to look at some other programs as well. So no, we're not, we're not sitting on our, on our walls here and, and not looking at how it is that we can be progressive. We're still looking at some other programs that we can do.
We have some problems that have been forced on us that we've got to work our way through, but I hope we still have a proactive approach to adding programs that's going to bring our students in.
Yeah, I mean, we're, I don't play the victim game very well. So we're going to be creative and we're going to find ways to be creative. You know, with all the circumstances presented and
We have found several new things that have added to it, haven't we? As far as grants, I
Yeah, I mean, I, I think that's going to be something there that's just becoming more, I mean, we've, we've put a very strong focus on it here this past year, but I think that's going to be something that we just continue to be able to, to grow and enhance there is funding positions through grants, funding, you know, programs expansion or enhancement through grants. I think that's, that's just going to be part of what we add as far as our nature going forward. So, but again, happy to answer any questions we go through this, but you know, just referencing back on you know, on page twelve there as far as with the reduction of eleven positions. You know, you can see through both the, the salaries, the benefits, we will have up to five hundred thousand that will be removed from the expenses side of the budget there for this year. And then operationally, uh we have administratively, we've gone through and, and again, give credit where it's due there as far as with the captain, going through and identifying areas where we can be able to make cuts on our operational side, uh to where overall there will be a ten percent reduction in operational budgets. That's not to say that every budget line is going to have a ten percent reduction, but we have gone through and found where we can be able to get to get the ten percent reduction. What that equates to is about five hundred and fifty-eight thousand uh additional operations cuts, which is on top of the seven percent that we cut out of operations this last year. So your operations are going to be your your supplies, your travel, um a lot of just the day-to-day operational sides of things there that are now being more is being removed from that side um to be able to negate having to take any further cuts there with the personnel.
How, how reasonable is a twelve percent or a fifteen percent? Are we pretty thin? I mean, I know you said it's ten percent plus the seven percent. It's already thin. So I mean, you know, say bump it another three percent. I mean, I'm sure it's doable. I'm sure it's doable, maybe not want to do it, but I mean, we're talking pretty severe cuts, huh?
Well, the largest, um, you know, probably seventy-five percent of our budget is. Salaries. So some of the things that. Got us to that half a million plus. Cut is last year we budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in vehicles. This year we budgeted no vehicles. You know, trying to look at some of those big pots. We've, we've eliminated. Majority of professional development travel. Not completely, but majority. So we, on the athletic side, we've cut some. Out-of-season competitions, is that accurate? So that not only. Have an effect on. Just the gain cost and all of that, but also on, you know, travel, hotel, you know, those kind of things. Probably, especially if you look on, say, the faculty side of operations, I mean, their budgets. Operationally are, you know, maybe three hundred dollars, you know, so you take. You know, you, you take every little bit that you can, but it just doesn't have a large impact.
Really comes down to personnel.
It does, it does. And, uh, you know, one of the things that. We're fortunate. That we have put in place before my time is that we, on our health insurance benefits for our employees. We just have a flat amount, you know, they, we give them six hundred dollars a month. Up to six hundred dollars a month for their health insurance premium. We've been fortunate to hold those premiums level. However, this year, so if you, if you hold them level and so then we buy down our reserves. So that we avoid a cost increase to our employees. We have, we've done that for a couple of years, so.
Pretty substantial reserve.
Right. However, this year we weren't able to add anything to the reserve, so it was kind of. Twofold and we were, we did buy down some of the premium. But we unfortunately will have to pass some of it off to our employees, so there will be a slight increase in, in their premiums. But, um, you know, but on the institutional side of budgeting. We don't have that vulnerability for health insurance. Cause you know, we'll talk about insurance in a bit, but that can be. That, that can really be a. Huge budget factor trying to continue to provide good quality health. Insurance to our employees and balance that cost. So that's one thing that we're fortunate is to have a level. Level budgeting when it comes to health insurance, so.
I would have. Our health insurance premiums went up this year though. Ten to fifteen thousand dollars a month. And you said you kept them flat, didn't you?
No, no, we did not keep them flat. Right, right. We didn't keep them flat. This, uh, we have in the past two years. We bought down, like last year, we bought down the reserves to keep them flat. And it cost us seventy-five thousand dollars out of our reserves. This year to buy them down flat, it was close to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So we went back and said, okay, what, what would it cost us to have a. Not to buy them down completely. Because it just, you know, the, the amount of, well, we didn't contribute anything to the reserves and then you take that much out. And then you're, you're getting into a position where you're increasing your vulnerability when it comes to pricing increases. So. So that's. It's hard to, you know, eventually say to our employees, fortunately, we have an October. Renewal day, we're hoping that we'll have, we'll, we'll. We will not have to expense or not have to pass all of that expense on, on. To our employees, but this, you know, but it's the time to make the decisions and so, um, well, that's kind of the path we're moving toward.
Remind me again, we still have all of our retired folks, right, that are retired, vested here on our insurance?
They, they pay the.
They pay the, they pay the premium, but they're. Yeah, yeah.
Have to affect your usage.
Yeah.
But it's up to a certain age, right, isn't it?
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five, and then they drop off.
Yeah, but they have to be in the program for seven, ten years.
Right, and there's a, they have to make up with. Yeah, but it does. It does affect us with our, on the actuarial side. Having that population.
Absolutely. That's, that's what I was, I mean, that's where I'm getting at. It's the increased risk of the increased age.
We have this, at the bottom of this says insurance expenses. Does that include the increase in the premium that we're going to have to pay for all of that?
On the next page.
Yeah, so, so what we have, what we have on page twelve is really just giving you a representation. Appreciate you kind of laying this out there, but it's twelve, the representation of where we would be at there. Add insurance, have been unknown about liability insurance and additional expenses. That we do not know about there. So even without that there, we were still going to be facing a three hundred and sixty-two thousand dollar. Hold of the terminology that we want to count for that this next year.
So I was just trying to stay with you. I wasn't, I, I didn't want to get ahead of us, so that's.
It's a good lead in, it's a good lead. So the difference between page twelve and thirteen is really just exactly what you're referencing. Page thirteen is the same information we presented as far as revenue and expenses. With the insurance increases of five hundred and fifty thousand being. Added into this. So now on top of what it is that we have reflected in on page twelve as far as the. Three hundred and sixty thousand dollar. Deficits. Page thirteen showing that we will now be facing a nine hundred and twelve thousand dollar deficit there because of the. Increases in, in insurance. So. You know, again, this is, this is prefacing the showing where it is, where we're at. So. You know, happy to answer questions. That we have on that there and then we can kind of get into some further talking points and discussion unless there are questions. So not so that everything is doing blue, uh, because as you talked about budgets there, it seems like that's kind of the. Kind of the oar that's given off there is. I think it's, I think it's important to also kind of start to take a look at highlighting some of the. Some of the positive, some of the proactive steps, uh, that you're taking. So I'm going to just. Talk in generalities and then I'll. You turn to page five. So one of the things that, you know, that we have done and, and credit to. Mark and the instructional leadership and faculty is that we have done. A very good job of trying to address and bring on some new programs, particularly on the technical side. That provides us opportunities for growing revenue with the, with the SB one fifty-five funding. You know, that's really the, the only area there at the state level there that we have control over. Being able to increase and then control our own destiny on revenues. So, you know, this past year, we have. We've seen a substantial increase. In what it is that we have as far as dual credit technical education program and revenue. You know, what we, what we forecast and see for this next year, particularly bringing on carpentry, cosmetology. And adding automotive programs that we've not added to a credit level. Uh, we, we anticipate that we will see significant increases in revenue. Because of the SB one fifty-five funding and those additional programs there as well. So. You know, again, I think, you know, we're, we're being proactive and taking a look at how it is that we can control our destiny. And look at ways to be able to grow revenue through that. But the other. The other side of this there, and I think this is a point just to. You know, to make and, and be able to give some insight into this there as well, but. You know, we remember back to last year at this time, last year, as we were setting budgets and having these conversations. Uh, then, you know, the decision was reached that we were going to use reserves to be able to build this current year's budget. So we. You know, as, as a board, there's, there is directive that we will have a twenty percent. Reserve threshold on the general, general fund side. We went, we went ahead and bought that down, uh, to eighteen percent. We used two percent of our reserves to be able to build this year's budget. Well, you know, through a lot of just conservative. Budget planning and a lot of work there on the administrative side, you know, this current year. The administration, we've worked, you know, very diligently, methodical to be able to, even though we built. Our budget on the two percent reserves, our intent was to try to be able to get back to that twenty percent threshold. Well, on page five. You can see, you know, just based upon projections and we won't have final numbers for you here until the July meeting, but. You know, Carla has gone through and you've really taken a look that as we go through payroll, we have. You know, just realizing what we have as far as outstanding operational costs to get through the end of this fiscal year. Estimation is there is that we will have our uncovered cash as of June thirty at a twenty point three percent threshold. So we have. Again, through just a lot of. Hard work and, and being very methodical and conservative about how it is we're approaching things. Been able to integrate reserves from when we had it set at eighteen percent to get it back to that twenty percent threshold. Uh, so I bring that to you there just so that you can kind of see, and again, we'll have the final numbers here at the July meeting to. To give you the hard, the hard line on this, but based upon what it is that we have. As of today, we've left fiscal year, just some things that will close out. You know, I, I'm very happy to be able to say that being able to get back to that twenty percent threshold, there's, is a, you know. You know, very much a pat on the back there for the work and the efforts that have been done. And, you know, on top of that there, then also the capital outlay. You know, we've been able to take care of a lot of deferred maintenance needs. We've been able to add. New considerable amount of work there to projects and, and areas that needed addressed. But still be able to have a ending balance in our capital outlay of.
And we'll just add that normally our revenue is around half a million dollars. For the capital outlay reserves, but the reason it is showing more there is because of the grant that we got. For the athletic training facility. So we're, we're paying the balance of that project. Out of capital, of course, and so we booked that additional revenue in the capital outlay fund.
I just, I, you know, I meet with Ryan weekly and, uh, he's probably tired of me. Telling him and, and, and. Hammering him on that reserves and, and I don't, you know, I think we should have more reserves. We've talked about, you know, having. Um, a little higher and it has been higher in the past, but I would just, I mean. Hats off to all of you for bringing that back up because I think that was one of my biggest fears is, and we've talked about that last budget meeting. Is we take away and it's so easy to take a little bit and a little bit and never put it back. And if you don't make an active effort to put it back. It never gets put back and, you know, while twenty percent isn't as much as we need in there. It's certainly where our, um, policy states. And so, um. I, I think even as a board standpoint is, is, you know, if you actively work to put some of it back in a year's time. Um, I think we, we'd give you props, but to actually put it back to twenty percent, I, like I said, I'm, I'm extremely pleased and happy with that. Um, and, and, you know, sometimes people may, to look at the grants and things like that, sometimes people may say, oh, it's not worth going after this grant. Or, you know, the, the chances of getting a grant or this or that, but we can obviously see from this money that every grant matters, every grant. Whether it's small, big, whatever, um, the fortitude and, and the dedication to go after these things, it does make an impact and. We talked about it last budget meeting with the insurance costs, we have to be creative. This is not a, not a university that has. Millions and millions in reserves and can just do whatever, um, every bite hurts and, and I just like I said, hats off, I. This is, I mean, this is probably one of the best things and should be highlighted, um, on your guys' staff. So congratulations on that.
Well, I appreciate that and, um, you know, I have to, I have to be honest and transparent. One of the things that. Allowed us to make the progress that we did was the pandemic that we're in.
You're right.
I was wondering about that.
Yeah, so you know, there is a lot of staying.
It's always a silver lining to something.
You have to, you know, it's, it's, um, there, yeah, there is a silver lining, however, um. It, um, yeah, there's a lot of student life that didn't get to happen and, um, because of that. But, um, you know, we just continue to push forward.
Well, that's all I got to say. I, like I said, I know, like you said, Ryan, probably every other week I was like, where's our, where's our reserves at? We can make something up, so anyway, it's good, good to hear.
So anyways, just, you know, kind of highlighting that, you know, that there are some, there's some positives, you know, to welcome seeing. You know, I think the, really the essence and kind of the premise of what it is that we want to, to talk about goes back to. You know, obviously the budget, setting the budget and really trying to take a look at. How it is that we, you know, we are projecting and those we have a whole nine hundred and twelve thousand we need to be able to account for. Being able to take a look at how this will do that. And so, you know, part of. Last piece here that, you know, you want to be able to talk through and have some conversation on there as a venture with. With options for consideration, you know, keeping full well in mind there that. Nothing has to be decided tonight there. It's not until we, you know, come forward to you there in July there for. Budget, that we will have to make these decisions, but I think it's, it's better to be able to have some time to kind of think through. The options and scenarios, think through what it is that's going to be the best path for, for the college. So, you know, what we have came up with there, if you turn to page fifteen. There's really just three specific options and these aren't. By any means, the only options that are on the table, but this is, uh, these three options that. We will bring forward here tonight and then leave it out there for discussion, conversation following this. Option one. You know, that we take, we're taking a look at, there's really just a, a flat, a flat budget with the. Realization that there would need to be additional cuts of nine hundred and twelve thousand in order to make this next year's. Budget balance of what we have set up. So option one is, is really just a flat budget there and. Administration going back to work and determining how it is that we will. Realize those cuts to get to that number. Option two, and, and again, there's multiple, I call this more of the hybrid model problem, but there's multiple ways that we can. Cut and dice this there to get to the point that we need to, but option two would be. But option two will be representing.
You said there's a typo, sorry.
Option two would be taking a look at similar models of what we experienced this year as far as using reserves to be able to buy down the additional cuts, buy down what it is that we would need to have as far as additional expenses being removed from the budget. You know, I think there's several different scenarios that we can take a look at in this there as far as, you know, we had a pretty lengthy conversation last year during this time there, whether you can use 1% of your reserves or you can use 2%. You know, there's combinations that you can use as a combination where you use reserves as well as mill. You know, I think there's, again, I call this a hybrid model because there's a lot of different ways you can, you can cut and dice this up there to be able to get it to where we need to be. And then option three is strictly taking a look at maintaining the budget, balancing the budget there by increasing the mill. And what, what we are presenting, giving you as an example based upon tonight's numbers, we'll be at mill increase of 1.83 to negate the $912,000. I think the other, you know, the one side of that there, because there's always questions asked of exactly what does that mean? You know, what does a 1.83 mill increase mean to a home, you know, to commercial? If you turn to page 14, just to page right before that. Have some background knowledge of this. On the residential side, you know, Carla had gone in and figured that, you know, just for an example, on a $100,000 home, to increase one mill is $11.50 for a home's, for a $100,000 home value. So the example that she had compiled is for a $300,000 home, a 1.83 mill increase would equate to $63.80. Commercial side, again, $100,000 commercial value, the increase of one mill is $25. And so for a $500,000 commercial value, a 1.83 mill increase would be roughly $229. And then ag has been figured in some way. So again, I think it's good to have walking, you know, walking knowledge of exactly what, you know, what the, the impact and what the mill increase means. But I think the, you know, the other side of it there then is, is we take a look at it and, and, you know, we always want to be good stewards. We always want to make sure that we are the best stewardess we can be there in the roles that we play. I think the other, you know, the other aspect we take a look at there is the mill at Garden City Community College Board has been very good stewards in the past. We have not increased the mills since 2012. Before that, it's 2003. So, you know, historically, we've gone eight to nine years in between having to be able to bear the burden through a mill increase. And I think a lot of, a lot of that is attributable to, you know, just what's happening here locally. That you have strong evaluation, you have strong property valuation. And also looking at it as a last resort in the board, how it is that we try to maintain balanced budgets and not looking to put it on the backs of tax books. You know, we'd be a mess if we didn't bring that forward there as far as an option to consider and what it is that's, definitely point to there through, through the various options that we're presenting.
Have you had any conversations with the other taxing entities, that's what they're gonna do?
I have, you know, I would say that the, each of the entities, I've talked with everybody except with the city. None of them have indicated that they are increasing. You know, I, I think that both of the school districts, and I'll only talk with the ones that, that I represent as board, both of the school districts, K-12 has not been a hard hit as what higher education has. Yep, K-12 has not experienced the, you know, the losses of revenue through the pandemic like what higher ed and the city and county have. I think school districts, their funding is going to remain in place this next year. They're not experiencing, they're not going to be looking at a 10% a lot more than what higher ed is. So in talking with the county and talking with local school districts, they've indicated at least at this point, unless things change there, that they're not likely to increase meaning for that.
I think that's, I mean, like we talked about too, is, yeah, school districts, you know, they've got the kids in the community and we're going to figure out a way to get kids back in school. Unfortunately, the colleges and universities have been hit because the unknowns of whether kids are going to come back on campus from out of state or out of town, or if it's just going to be local kids. And, you know, we have been good stewardess, stewardess of the money. And, and, you know, opportunities, we haven't had the, as much money coming in for, you know, from the, from the government funding and, and constantly being taken away. It, you know, it, it goes back to, I mean, again, we don't want to play, don't need to play victim, but the 550,000 increase or 500,000 increase is definitely going to, I mean, we would be talking, what, potentially 300,000? 300,000, I think that, you know, but that, that's a, it's a hard hit and we're going to have to bear that, obviously bear it for years to come too. So it is essentially going to affect every, every citizen in, in this region, whether it was intended or not. So that's something, obviously, what we all have to look at and, and consider. And definitely not an easy decision by any means. And that's why we have a month to, to mull it over and, and certainly look at options that are, but yeah, some definitely not easy, easy things to talk about.
Do we know what the unemployment rate's down to in, in Canada? How much it's increased?
I know, I mean, I, I know that just in conversations you've had, economic development there that it's increased. But I'd be quoting the numbers here that aren't accurate there if I gave it, gave it to you there. I know that there has been an increase or more than that, maybe three.
And were we supposed to hear about athletics today? Was it today the day?
There has been, Friday, they came out with, with a decision there that, at least nationally, they're, we're going forward not making any, not making any adjustments there to scheduling at the national level that they've provided as recommendations of what it is that they, they have guidance. As a conference, we actually met, presidents met last Friday, the 80s met this week. The presidents in the 80s have approved doing a 10% cut in the number of scheduled dates that we can have for all sports across sport. So again, like Carla was mentioning there, what that does is freeze up travel, freeze up your cost of officials. Things on that end there, so.
To me, it sounds like, yes, we are going to have those athletes on campus, going to school.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. Do we have any indication, and maybe not in NJCAA, but any indication that, you know, or colleges are not going forward? I mean, I know some universities are saying, no, they're not going to have sports. But in the NJCAA, everyone's full, full go with football or, or athletics. Nobody's saying, no, we're taking a year off or anything like that?
Not in our conference, not within the schedule. I think there are some, there are some conferences, some within the NJCAA that have made that decision, but not within the schedule.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I think the other, I mean, the other point that I would make there is that, you know, even two, two and a half, three weeks ago, before the national office, before the conference, and that said, this is the path that we're wanting to take forward. Administratively, we had already made the decision that we were wanting to be reducing our schedule dates. You know, so I think, you know, again, it's great to be able to have uniformity in the conference and have, you know, everybody on the same page. But as a college, we had already made that decision that this was going to be one of the majors that we've done for some reductions in expenses.
Good. Want to just have some questions like to be answered before? Obviously, I know Ryan will be available and, and as we get more solid numbers, those things will be pushed out to the board. Hopefully get some more concrete numbers and have a better idea going into the July meeting, which is, I'll reiterate, a, a week later, the 21st of July, to give Ryan and then, and his staff an opportunity to get a, a better idea. Any questions, anyone? Make sure we could use the time.
I guess with that, we'll, I just want to, I, I see that Amy and I'm sure Dr. Ruda, there's a couple of handouts for you guys reading mostly about fall enrollment COVID and all that jazz. And then, of course, Garden City Community College has a guide to reopening campus. It's a nice brochure and kind of lays out. I think one thing should be noted is, and certainly talking to Ryan, and they have done an excellent job of preparing and, foretelling what-if scenarios and how to keep kids safe and, and how we can combat COVID-19 if it happens to reemerge or if it will and probably will. And, and so I think, and are we getting this out more like, is it publication?
We're putting it out internally here today.
Okay. Yeah. I, like you said, I think, I think the general consensus, like we talked about last time, is kids are, kids, parents, everyone's, well, how are we going to go about it? And I think this is going to answer a lot of questions. And I think this keeps, this puts a lot of safety or at rest parents and kids that are going to be, coming to Garden City and, and as time goes on, I think, once we, you know, we've made the decision that athletics is going on, I, I think hopefully we'll see those enrollment numbers start jumping up. And I know you guys made a, a very good effort to, to increase that. And other than that, just a shout out to, don't forget anybody that's listening and the board. Endowment auction is going on right now, a little non-traditional. It's all online. If you go to the endowment's website, there's a link to it and it's through Sky Auction. And it's runs for what, four more days or three days, something like that.
Through Sunday and tomorrow night's when they're doing the 50/50 drive.
Yeah, yeah.
So they've picked them up from all of us. They are, I'm sure, kids still.
Yeah, yeah.
Puck you up in the morning.
So I, like I said, get out there. Again, all that goes to scholarships and good causes that, you know, spend a little time on there, spend a little money. Hopefully, you know, it's a big success. I know it, like I said, it's, they put a lot of work into it and trying to do something to still offer some scholarships, so.
Been long time with options.
Right, shouldn't have even been thinking about that. Onto, yeah, so.
Yeah.
Um, other than that.
Y'all saw, published all that on the internet, the developments of the athletics.
Yeah.
Maybe you haven't seen that yet.
As far as the NJCA is playing.
One of his, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, he does a pretty good job of keeping us informed of things that are going on now.
Yeah, really does.
So with that, like I said, there's some reading material for you and Dr. Ruda, and then we'll get out to you. But other than that, we'll go ahead and adjourn meeting for tonight. Thanks all for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks for your hard work.
Yeah.